Hello, everyone.
Hey Colin.
Hey Maria. I know.
Hey.
I don't like. Different programs have different zoom in. So like, I feel like on Teams, I'm like way back here and that zoom. Eating the camera. So sorry about that.
Not at all, Colin. You we'll let you know if you're in our face.
Oh, you're gonna just pin me to the big screen, right?
It's just like too close, too close.
Hi, Tim. Glad you're here.
Hey, how's everyone doing?
Good.
We're good, Tim. Oh, we have Chris online.
Mr. Diedrich.
I thought Wade was on vacation. Was that last week?
Maybe he's calling in from vacation.
I mean, I respect him and all, but I hope not.
Poor precedence, right? There you go.
That was last week, Colin.
Okay, welcome back.
All right. Well, um, waiting to see if anyone else will join us here. I know that member Can Addison had said that he will not be joining us this evening. But I did not hear from member Louis. Yeah. So I believe even at this time, we would have a quorum based off of member Diedrich and and member Whitney being here. So we can, we can proceed with the meeting. That's, we're good with starting now. All right. Oh, there's. Hi Greg, I misspoke. I thought you were not going to be able to make this meeting. Sorry, you're here.
I was just a minute late. Sorry about that.
Okay, no problem. Okay, great. Okay, um, well, let's begin, I guess. So I'll call to order the Inglewood Transportation Advisory Committee for this October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. The time right now is six oh two. And I'll ask Michelle to walk us through the called pretty much the role attendance, roll call. If you could do that, Michelle, it'd be appreciated.
Yeah, of course. Let's start with E-TAC. So we have a member Sarno.
Present.
A member Louis. A member Diedrich.
Present.
Member Can Addison.
Present.
And alternate member Whitney.
Present.
All right. Um, and with planning and zoning, we have member Austin. A member Donaldson.
Sorry, um, Michelle Austin here. Sorry, I had trouble unmuted. Sorry.
No worries. I got you. Um, so we'll go with member Donaldson again. Okay, a member Hagerty.
Here.
A member Hupka and member Brown, let me know that they won't be joining us today, tonight. A member Fuller. A member Adams. And member Atkins. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. So here's a part where if you can and share the screen, share the agenda. That would be also very helpful. If not, I can certainly put it up myself, but if you can do that and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, I can go ahead and share it.
Okay, great.
Do you see it okay?
I do. Very good. Thanks. So the next order of business here is approval of minutes from our last E-TAC meeting, which was held September ninth, two thousand twenty-one. And the enclosed meeting minutes are there. And if anybody has any comments for those meeting minutes, please provide them at this time. So I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but now's the time to speak to it. If there's anything that was missed or omitted. Okay. Scrolling down, looking for faces or hands. Did not see anything. Any comments at this time?
Motion to approve the minutes as included in the agenda packet.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Chris, for member Diedrich with the second there from member Can Addison. And we'll go to any further discussion on this. Any other comments? If not, we'll move forward to a vote. And Michelle, if you can do that, it'd be appreciated.
Yeah, let's start with a member Louis. Member Diedrich.
Yes.
Member Can Addison.
Yes.
Member Whitney.
Yes.
And member Sarno.
Yes, as well.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. All right. And now back to the agenda, and I'm gonna just guess, but I think that we're on to public comment. At this time, and is there, Michelle, anyone on the line, or is anybody currently present as well, too, in terms of from the, from the public here would like to participate, please feel free to speak to that at this time. And if you're coming in late, we'll, we'll let you in and also be able to participate at that time as well. So.
But I don't, I don't see anyone.
Okay. Well, I think we go forward then and just go headlong right into our business here. And let's start with the old business. So that comes from an accident report from the September twenty twenty-one accident at fourteen hundred East Hampton Avenue. There's a crash report that was attached to the agenda. And this is, of course, going back to our previous meeting where, and I believe it was member Can Addison who had that included on the agenda, last meeting's agenda, regarding the several crashes that have been prevalent, I think, over the last several years, if not longer to that area and those businesses as well. And if there's gonna be something that's done and just to highlight and focus that it's really a problem area in terms of accidents themselves. So we did, I did take a look at that, the, the crash report. It's devastating. And to consider that information and just how impactful that is to the, you know, people involved, the community, the businesses, just all across the board there. So you know, with that, member Can Addison, is, is there anything further that you wanted to glean from the crash report or, or open up to the group with?
Uh, no, it's a little hard for me to read. So I don't know if anybody was planning on discussing it from, like, if there's any members of the police department who are here tonight, or anybody from city staff who could talk through a little bit more detail? Yeah. See some hands up. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is Michelle Austin from Planning and Zoning here. I just wanted to let you know that Kate Fuller from Planning and Zoning has joined us as well. I don't believe she was here for the roll call.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you, Ms. Fuller, for attending. Welcome.
Sorry for the delay. Thanks for having me.
No problem.
And I think Director DeAndre was probably able to explain the report, and I just had a question about it and the area and traffic related issue afterwards, if, if she wants to go through the explanation, which I think she was saying she could do.
Yep.
Go ahead, Director Andrea.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Michelle, could you open up the crash report, please? Um, yeah, we just, we just wanted to follow up. So I did reach out to CDOT about this. So I know that was the direction given by E-TAC at the last meeting when we talked about this. And the one thing I wanted to point out about the crash report, and I'm happy to try and answer questions, Sergeant McKay isn't, isn't here tonight, but I've looked at a fair number of these, but what was interesting is they didn't hit the, the little shopping center. They hit one of those garages that were, are associated with those the apartment buildings or condos that are right there. So it didn't actually damage one of the cars in the garage. So was, yeah, pretty significant. Michelle, can you open up the crash report, please, and show that?
I think the ways, oh, there it is.
There we go. Yeah. So you can see there, it just shows the trajectory of that, the vehicle as it went off the side of the road there. So it's, it looks like they hit another vehicle, kind of a sideswipe or the front left bumper of another vehicle, and then went into that garage and then damaged a vehicle within there, too. So, but I did notify the CDOT about that. It is CDOT's responsibility to oversee the signage on that roadway. And so we verified that as well. If you go to the next slide, or excuse me, the previous sheet. Yeah, basically, this gives you all of the data that goes into a crash report. So a report similar to this is filled out for every crash that occurs within the state and just gives a lot of the details in terms of location, the direction, whether or not the the people inside were cited or not, the number of people, and then what their severity of their injuries were. So, yeah, that was the most important thing I wanted to point out, that, that map. But is there any other questions I can answer or try to answer about the report?
No, I think Director Andrea, if you go back to that, Michelle, to that map there as part of the report, yeah. And the way that I, I saw it, and I, I think I'm echoing what you're saying, but there was an impact there going westbound, looks like a vehicle, the gray vehicle, let's just call it, impacted that red vehicle, sending that red vehicle into what looks like a rollover situation there, three and a quarter rollover. And that rollover, that red vehicle ended up just going what would be, I guess, kind of that northwest direction there. While the gray vehicle continued on, and I believe impacted what would be the corner.
Yeah, excuse me. Yeah, it still hit the, the shopping center, just not as severe as, yeah, the, the garage unit.
Right. So, but yeah, it looks like, I mean, it was just, yeah, full on impact, it looks like. And was really, what I noticed was that I think the vehicle that caused this and was traveling, according to report, a hundred miles an hour.
Yep.
In a forty mile per hour zone. So, you know, not sure, and I, I didn't see anything in there that you know, indicated whether the driver was intoxicated or just reckless driving. I'm not sure of that as well, too, but just something else to consider there. So, but.
Yeah, I don't, typically, they'll be cited for impaired driving if they suspect that and they'll do a, you know, even afterwards, but it doesn't look, I don't know if they did that or not. Given that there was a fatality.
Yeah. So I'm exactly, but it's just something, and so in, in your connection with CDOT, you brought that to their attention, Director Andrea, and did they respond? Was there anything that they offered in, in terms of feedback?
Yeah, so they, they said that they'd look at it, you know, they had heard about this crash, too, and, and, you know, like, and I think I, I kind of started with that. We know that it was an anomaly, you know, the, the vehicle was going very fast, and obviously you can't design around all situations.
Right.
But what we, what I asked was that, given, you know, can you look at the pattern of history, especially in the westbound direction? Given that this is a curve and see if there's any additional, you know, safety measures or signage and I forget who made the suggestion, but should the forty mile per hour signage, the warning signs be moved further east to give more of a warning notice? So that's what I specifically asked for. So they're gonna look into that.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I believe, um, member Hagerty had some comments, and we have a few people that would like to speak as well.
Yeah, exactly. I'll get to that. And I think Colin was actually the first one to raise his hands. We'll go with Colin.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I, I do live in the thirty-three hundred block in this area, and people rip arounds that curve coming off of two eighty-five onto Old Hampton. And I guess my question is, is there consideration, especially with the development that's coming in, kind of kitty corner to that apartment or to the strip mall there with that new development coming in northwest? Would you ever consider closing this stretch to avoid making people kind of go around, maybe going to Downing and coming back up with that assist in that? Because I know people come, I mean, forty-five, fifty miles an hour, or at least through that section next to the Caribou Coffee and Pinos and, and all that. And, you know, there's actually a nice little pothole there now, which I really like, because I feel like some people hit it and slows them down a little bit. So if we could just maybe keep that or maybe a series of them, slow some people down, I think would be great.
Reverse speed humps, are you saying?
Exactly. Or, to be honest, or would a speed hump at the intersection of, I think, Gilpin's next street, you know, be a consideration or just something to slow people down? Because then they come ripping down, they hit the light it down, and they're just gonna continue hauling down until they see the flashing light from the, the hospital there at Swedish. And I know this last week, there's actually been a, a police radar unit out, which I think is helpful also, but that was pretty far down. So just wondering if there was ever, ever consideration of closing that portion of the, of Old Hampton.
Yeah, we have not considered that, that, that shopping center is actually in the city of Cherry Hills Village. So, and as you mentioned, it's a direct route to the hospitals as well. So when we, if we were to close that road, obviously, we'd have to coordinate with Cherry Hills Village. I'm sure that shopping center, as much as maybe they hate the traffic or the speed, they, they like the traffic going in front of them. So I could certainly, you know, reach out to Cherry Hills Village to gauge their interest in that. But I think it's gonna be more effective to try and see what we can do in terms of traffic calming and enforcement as opposed to looking at closing.
Is, is that something else, Director Andrea, that perhaps, you know, Swedish hospitals right down the, the street there, obviously, that the ambulances and, and their services also use that as well, too?
Possibly, yeah. That, that's a good point.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Just a, just a thought there. Anything else, Colin? Very good. Thank you.
Good.
Michelle, yeah, Michelle, you had your hand up?
Uh, yeah, it's sort of funny that being from planning and zoning like Colin, it's just like, we never see these things in planning and zoning. So we're like, oh, well, let's ask a bunch of questions about this stuff. Um, I was just curious. Well, Colin, you and I and Kate will try and keep our comments down so we don't interfere with her meeting. But I was just curious about how many accidents occur in this general area where the Old Hampton splits off of two eighty-five? In general? We had tried to pull that data, and it was a little bit cumbersome. So we did have a list at our last meeting. Um, the meeting before, we had the joint one with P and Z, and it, it was a little bit, they'd kind of given us a range. So we're trying to work on that with the police department is to look at exactly what's going on at this intersection or along this curve. But CDOT will definitely have that data more readily available because this is a CDOT road, all the accidents or crashes go through them. So I can, when I follow up with them, I'll ask them if they can give us specific numbers, like over the last three or five years for the actual number of crashes. Yeah, it was just, just a point of curiosity for me, because when the bullock mortuary thing came through, I did say, you know, you might want to put some concrete bullets there on the corner just because, because of this. And then, you know, I mean, I don't know if it'd do any good or not, but maybe some sort of like the flashing signs when we have the pedestrian crossing signs. I don't know, but you're right. This is two eighty-five, so it's gonna be CDOT's and CDOT's purview. But anyway, I was just curious. Thank you so much. Yep. But I think that's a good suggestion, is maybe adding some beacons to the, to the, you know, like stops or do a speed limit sign as you do, if you do travel on that road westbound, you know, that this is a lower speed and try and bring more awareness to that.
There were.
Sorry, excuse me.
You're good. There were three accidents that were newsworthy in the last year. So the Pinos Pizzeria was closed for about six weeks because of a car going through its cooler and hitting its dishwasher. So they had to close for six weeks last November, I believe. And then the Caribou Coffee had a, a car crash that flooded out their space. And then this accident with the rollover fatality and a slight damage to the Caribou Coffee corner. So those were the, the three things that I heard that was like, oh, this, you know, regardless of what else is going on, that feels like if there's three newsworthy things at a corner, feels pretty strong.
Thank you. Well, and of course, being a curve and being Colorado could be iciness and other things, too. Contribute to us. Who knows? Right?
I guess, I guess then the result, the result of this is continued coordination with CDOT, perhaps, to see what, what they can, can do and, you know, once, once things evolve or they're in our right of way, as you mentioned, Director Andrea, about some signage or, or whatever we can do to bring attention to motorists to slow down, that's possible as well, too, perhaps. So. But yeah, and, and I, I do have to say, Colin, I do know that pothole you're referring to because I ride a motorcycle and it's right in the middle of the road. And so I don't have, have noted it and tried to avoid it, and it slows me down. So there you go. I guess it serves its purpose. But but yeah, that is, and it's, it's just something that I think anybody that's ever just been there in that shopping plaza has seen that, if you're, especially if you've dined outside or been outside Caribou Coffee or any of these other establishments, seeing a lot of cars just really speeding down there. So hopefully we can do something to, to slow them down.
Um, so I, I've got a few comments and
Correct, member Diedrich.
Yeah, and questions, too. Thanks. But appreciate you finding zone guys, being here first of all. Thank you guys for joining, and feel free to chime in with questions and stuff. You know, we always love having people join in and more of the merry on some of these things. So thank you, guys. So Maria, I sent you an email a few weeks ago about some of the speed limit signs along that stretch of road right there. I actually haven't driven through there since then. So I apologize, haven't had a reply for you on, on the follow up there. Uh, but it was basically for the group, you know, some of the speed signs are covered by trees along this section and, and kind of all the way from Gilpin over to uh, you know, well, not all the way to Broadway, but we'll say maybe Clarkson. Uh, and I think some of it's just, you know, they've planted some new ones and they've grown in front of it, and I think they just need to trim. Uh, but I did notice I was riding my motorcycle through there one day, avoiding that pothole. I know which one you guys are talking about, too. And I, I did notice that just kind of going down the center lane on, on my bike, it was hard to see some of them until I was very close. And it, it was actually quite a few of them. I, you know, you asked specifically which ones, and, and really it was probably over half of them in that stretch there. So just a, a couple other comments on the speed limit signs that I wanted to make. Um, if you look at the crash report that's on the screen still here, the, the first thirty-five mile an hour speed limit sign in that section of road where it actually goes down to thirty-five is, is actually basically on the right edge of the screen right there. If you, you know, there are some markers, if you go on Google Maps, or you can go on to Street View and kind of look, or if you drive through there. Uh, but there's a little white dot, and that's an electrical box there. And the speed limit sign is about fifty, sixty feet maybe before that. So, um, you know, it, you're already pretty much in the corner when it actually goes to thirty-five. And I think that there's probably an opportunity to move that up a little earlier or make it more obvious. I know we talked a little bit about it, but so I went and that was part of my drive by there was to see like, okay, where does it really go and how visible is it? And it's a regular sized sign, you know, it's not an oversized one, even though it's a large road there. So, you know, that could be another option, but it seems like it's pretty late. It's basically where Franklin would cross if it did go across the road there. And, and so I think that you know, you know, people are starting to slow down when they hit that thirty-five. You know, most people don't slow down until they actually get to where the speed limit lowers. A lot of times they're slowing down into that section, and here they're coming fast. So I think there's an opportunity. And I, I think the comments earlier also about the hospital traffic down Hampton. Uh, I, I don't want to discount that too much. Uh, but also, you know, that does mean a lot of traffic through there. And so, you know, I don't know what sort of alternative there is, but being a big thoroughfare, you know, that, that might be a difficult sell, but interesting, interesting points that you guys brought up on that topic. Uh, so speed limit signs moving further, we're talking westbound here. So moving west on Hampton. There's one speed limit sign about every maybe three or four blocks or so. And this is an area with a lot of traffic, especially with all the redevelopment and, and more dense housing that's going in and the expansion of the hospital. And, you know, there's a few places where there's not a speed limit sign for a couple of blocks, two, three blocks, depending on where you're pulling out onto that road. So you know, just for traffic coming on and off of that road, I, I don't know what the guidelines are on, you know, sort of distances and frequency of those per whatever the speed limit is, but it did seem like, you know, there weren't maybe quite enough, and some of them, the trees are blocking. So I think just generally. Now, that's a little bit further around the corner from where a lot of these accidents occur. So I want to go back to that real quick. There's a report that you can pull up from the minutes. Um, and then from my last meeting. And there's eastbound, uh, it's, there's an eastbound and a westbound report, I believe, is what they were. I don't remember the exact details, but there's um, one of them is, it's westbound, and it was basically thirty accidents this year. And then the eastbound one was about the same number, but I think that one went all the way back to two thousand nineteen. So, you know, it's that westbound traffic, and I think that's pretty well understood that that's where a lot of accidents happen on that corner is the westbound side. So, you know, the, the, the speed bump was, was something that we haven't heard in this committee before, and I, I don't mean to laugh at it, but you know, they are effective. They use them in the mountains and the braking zones, things like that. Um, I know they're tough for the plows, and, and there's probably a, a lot of reasons that they're not great, but, um, you know, could be something to consider because, you know, it is a problem, and there's a lot of developments, there's gonna be a lot more, you know, traffic in and out of that area as well. Um, and I know you're not CDOT, so you're just kind of passing some of this information along for us, Maria. I, you know, I, I realize I'm kind of speaking to you on that, but I'd, you know, love to hear if the group has any other comments on those types of things as well. So, um, thanks.
Well, yeah, and with that, Director Andrea, you have your hand up. So go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you. Just to, um, so to member Diedrich's point, so we are gonna go out and trim back those branches around like the speed limit sign. So we did get that message, and Chris Groth is gonna go out and do that. Again, that would be CDOT's response, that would be CDOT's responsibility, but by the time they do it, or if they, they'll probably push back and say, you guys can do it. So we'll just go out and do that. But to your, to that list, remember from last meeting, there was a number of accidents on there, but they were for a range of, of addresses. So it wasn't just this location. So just, just wanted to remind you of that. So we're trying to pinpoint what actually happened. So I think it went like from the fourteen hundred to the nineteen hundred block of Hampton or something. So I think we got a pretty wide range of accident data, and so we need to hone in on this specific location. Just a reminder on that.
Yeah, I meant to mention that. Thank you. And I, I think, uh, I think there was another piece. I think there was another piece of where these were EPD reports and maybe we didn't have all of C dot data or, you know, there were some other things like that. Maybe C dot or the highway patrol didn't necessarily call in EPD on everything and vice versa, depending on what street it was over several blocks. So yeah, good to keep in mind. They weren't all necessarily related to that intersection in general. Thanks. And, and thanks for the follow up on the tree stuff. Sorry, it took a while to get back to you. I appreciate that.
Hey. And also, um, member Whitney, yeah, I was just curious if we could, uh, if C dot, that would, C dot be in charge of a study there to get the, um, speeds going westbound? Is that, would that be under their, their purview? Uh, cause I'm wondering if even for the old Hampden pullout, like as a drastic measure, making that third lane a turn lane. Um, so you actually have to slow down. So at the stoplight, it would actually basically end into what would, you'd have to merge. And that way, I mean, it would actually slow traffic down significantly because people come through that stop, that stoplight. And then westbound, obviously going westbound, keep their speed going. Uh, now having to merge, that means you're going to have to, uh, slow down by the nature of your merge, hopefully. Cross our fingers.
Member Whitney, are you talking about on Old Hampton? So once you get off of two eighty-five?
I'm actually talking on Hampden or on two eighty-five itself, making that third lane into Old Hampden a turn lane.
Okay.
And that would obviously, uh, be a constriction in the traffic flow and possibly cause some more traffic. Uh, but at the same time, it would slow people down dramatically. And if we see that the bulk of the accidents are between basically that old hand and that S curve. Between Old Hampden and was that Clarkson? Uh, then that would possibly reduce it by only having to be two lanes going westbound.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, I can, I can certainly, um, there, there's probably going to be, I think we talked about this maybe last time too, but we need the, or C dot will say the capacity is needed for three lanes. You know, we already have issues on two eighty-five with volumes. So I doubt that we're going to be able to take away a lane just for slowing purposes. So I think it's maybe more, is there some kind of, um, modifications we can do to slow people down on Old Hampton or even as you suggest, as they come off of, maybe make that curb there less easy, you know, and less of an off ramp almost. Um, and a little bit maybe harder to, where you have to slow down before you actually make the turn onto Old Hampton. We can certainly, um, look at that with C dot as well. And we can get counts or volume speeds on Old Hampton. That would be up to us because now it's then on our road to do that. See how fast they're actually going.
Director DeAndrea, would the PL study, I believe it's happening or going to happen include this area?
It does. So we're doing a congestion mitigation study. We just actually, um, awarded that contract a couple of city council meetings ago. So they're going to kick off probably here right for, um, sometime in November. And that'll take about fourteen months, but yes, this is part of that stretch and they'll be evaluating that. Thank you for that. Yeah.
Yeah, great. Who's actually doing that study?
F H U.
Okay, great.
Hey, very good. Yeah, um, speaking to that Director Andrea, that's what I'm suspecting as well to C dot's response might be in terms of taking away a lane and yeah, they're, they're looking for as much capacity as possible, I'm guessing in there and it could also be problematic if you just convert that into a lane and then you have people and there'll probably be some sort of training that would have to happen with the general public for them to get out of that lane. They would probably want to get out of that lane and merge into traffic and just create havoc in that sense as well too, is a possibility to do that, but, um, it's, it's a, it's a well thought idea though, member Whitney, so possibility, I think it would just have to get looked, looked into a little bit further by C dot. On what they, what they think about that. So, yeah. Um, anything else on this topic right here? For the discussion? I don't see any hands at this time. So we can go ahead and continue and go to the next topic. Michelle, if you want to bring that up? Great. So we're still on all business here and it's the Windermere On Street Bike Lanes Project Update. So I think, uh, we'll go to Director DeAndrea for that on where that's at, so.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Sarno. Um, I just wanted to give a, a quick verbal update on this. So we did, um, I've, we've talked about this in the past, just wanted to let the group know that we were proceeding with this. So this was a joint project with the city of Littleton where they've actually installed bike lanes, on-street bike lanes, uh, that are marked and signed all the way from Littleton Boulevard up to about just north of Bellevue. And so we've, we're taking it from there and then installing on-street bike lanes uh, from where they ended just north of Bellevue up to Tough Avenue. So we are going to, um, award that project hopefully next Monday at city council meeting. And the goal would be is to do that installation yet this fall. So just, that's, wanted to let you guys know about that.
Great. We're, we're still able to, to get it, get it in before the snow flies. That's always nice to hear.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Are we getting it in today? Like, is it?
In the next three minutes? No.
I saw the forecast next week looks pretty good, so you got a window there, but
Yeah.
No, it's understood. So, but I'm, I'm glad it's, it sounds very responsive and prompt, um, to be able to do that and still get that plugged in before the, in the year if possible. So really good. And I think this came from, if I recall, um, the citizen, um, member of the public that brought this to our attention. And, but I think we also discussed it ourselves within E-TAC as well to Windermere and the possibilities for the bike lanes. So but, um, it's good to see movement on that. All right, very good. There's nothing else with that. We'll move on to new business. So let's go to the big show here and it's the walk and wheel update input and discussion. And, uh, there you go, Michelle, if you could hit that presentation. Super.
Okay.
All right. Maybe try another click there, it's not coming up on my screen perhaps.
I'll tell you what, I, um, if you allow me to share my screen, I can share all the same materials. This is Chris Vogel saying, and I've got them all arranged in a good way, so I can go back and forth and so we can kind of facilitate our discussion.
By all means.
Yeah, you should be able to share.
Sure. I will grab this. So you have to stop sharing, Michelle, I think, and then I can.
There you go.
Super. Now you can all see me. How are you? Thanks for, thanks for having me tonight. Thanks for everybody taking the time to have this joint session. I, I know, uh, John and I really appreciate it and city staff really appreciate it. And, um, I want to go through, uh, just a, a pretty simple presentation, but I have maps and spreadsheets and I just want to um, update you on where we are, share kind of what our draft results are and uh, get some input and discussion. So let me share my screen. Should be coming your way. Great. Okay. Um, so I'll just kind of, I'll give a start. So again, I'm Chris Vogel saying, I, I hope y'all remember me, but I am the consultant project manager for this Inglewood Walk and Wheel Update. And John Volbel is the city project manager. Uh, he isn't able to be here today. He got married actually last week and I think today or tomorrow is his last day of PTO. So good for him. Um, okay, so quick meeting overview. Uh, we don't need to do introductions. I think we all, all know each other. Um, a couple of quick updates I'll give you, um, just some high level webpage and status, go through reminders of our project goals, our process, and then I want to talk about screenings, spend most of our time on screening. Um, and show you where we ended up, but I know you all had the materials ahead of time. Maybe you got a chance to look, maybe you didn't, but hopefully I can provide some context. Okay, so we did get a project webpage live, um. It was earlier this week, I believe Nancy Fenton and Lucia Magnussen um, did a great job getting that up and running. So really appreciate their help. And I'm going to show you what that looks like real quick. So this is up on the city's website. Um, it includes, this is some of the stuff we talked about at our last meeting about what the key plans and, uh, key steps are and goals. Um, right now there's a, an area where you can, you know, subscribe, so we'll send you some updates. The video of our last meeting is on here. And one, uh, one photo from our Inglewood Walk Party as well as, um, key dates, which is great. So kind of keep track and the materials we presented last time. One of our plans with this page, um, after this meeting is to try to put a, um, a survey or an input form up, uh, so we can get some input from the public on the information we're going to present to you tonight as well. Okay, a reminder of what we're trying to do, because I know it gets kind of, um, it's easy to lose track. So one thing to remember, this isn't a whole new walk and wheel plan, right? This is an update of the last plan and it's really about um, being driven by, uh, the city's desire to find tangible and achievable projects that can be implemented, right? And so there's a lot of other interesting things, um, that Inglewood, uh, is interested in and needs, um, that might be a little past the scope of this, but the idea was let's start making things happen. Let's start finding out what was from our last planning process wasn't done. And let's find the ones that we can get done. Um, so that's really what our kind of laser focus has been. And I'd love, um, I'm happy, you know, we can bring it up as high as you guys want. If there's other things, as we're taking notes, we're going to capture all this input. Um, at the end of the day, what our recommendations will be about, what can we do um, in the next few years to make things better for citizens? Overall project process reminder, um, the key steps engaging you all um, to, you know, really act as the voice for, for the citizens. Uh, identify recommendations that have been accomplished. We talked about that last time and ones that were left. Uh, develop a baseline evaluation of that fifteen minute city. Remember we shared those maps that had kind of had purple circles and different circles to show how the city's doing at walkability and bikeability. Um, get a list of recommendations that were outstanding. And we're right here right now. So we're prioritizing those recommendations. And the next things we'll do is get cost estimates so we can support the city's implementation of budgeting process. So a couple of real high level things, um, about our screening process. So we, we screened in two tiers. So we started with, um, well, I guess it really three, like what got done and what didn't get done. That was sort of our screen one. And then in terms of our technical screening, uh, we took all those projects or fifty-one projects. And we looked at really basic stuff. From our professional experience, how hard are these or easy to implement and how expensive are they, are they going to be? Are they going to be affordable, um, in the near term? So we went through all the projects, we did a quick, um, kind of pass fail test with that and twenty-five, about half of our fifty-one projects passed. And I'm gonna, um, give you a little map here. So this map, um, was of all the projects we found and the ones that are highlighted in this kind of greenish are ones that passed our level one screening that we took into more detailed screening. The ones with this kind of, uh, pinkish, those are actually projects that are in progress based on information we've gotten from community planning development or public works projects that were on our list that are happening or imminent to happen. Um, so, so we kept those on here to give some context how everything relates to each other. And, uh, by the way, if there's any questions along the way, um, I don't know if I can see hands, but if Michelle sees hands and can just prompt me, happy to stop anytime. Okay, so, so then we took those twenty-five projects and we went into a more detailed screening process and um, we used those factors that we talked about last time and that we shared with the public. We developed some more meat to those, like what does that really mean? And how can we, uh, judge all these, um, all these factors for each project against each other? So if you remember, we had connectivity and some of the meat we gave to that was improved connections to key destinations or improve access to transit. Those were important things we looked at. Overall project cost. So at this point, that's more of a relative cost to each other. So the ones that passed our level one screening, we determined we could probably a, a budget and implement. Um, if they were important enough. And then we ranked them based on, is this one super cheap? Is this one a little more expensive, right? Uh, demand, so responds to stakeholder and community input and falls within our fifteen minute and five minute city maps, those heat areas that we showed last time. For demand, I just want to talk about this. So basically every project that we had on the list went through a public involvement process as part of the Walk and Wheel twenty fifteen plan, right? And so they all scored at least two out of, we had a, a scale of one to four, basically. All the projects scored at least a two out of four and then ones that were in the quick wins or we had heard more about got four out of four. So that's how we thought of that. Ease of implementation, this is sort of a, a more detailed look at what we looked at in level one. So is, would right of way be needed? Are there parking impacts? Would we, is it complex? Like, are there multiple agencies involved with C dot and Inglewood and maybe Cherry Hills Village, right? And, um, so how hard are they to get across the finish line? Equity, um, this was really, we ended up in a sort of geographic, um, kind of looking at that more than a socioeconomic way. Um, so improving accessibility to underserved areas. And then the last one was safety and comfort and we, um, Tim Hus or Hus, who's, who is on the call now, actually shared good, um, accident data with us for the city, for ped bike crashes that we're able to look and um, kind of check things out that way. And then just look at the, the projects themselves and see how much they make it easier and safer to get around as a bike and pet. So with that, I want to, um, want to show you, I'm going to go to this spreadsheet next and I'll go between the spreadsheet and the map. They both are kind of useful for different things. I just want to start with the spreadsheet to give you an overview. So this is a summary spreadsheet. And, um, we also provided this more, much more detailed spreadsheet, which is really hard to read on your screen. Um, and we can dig into this if we have questions or, um, if you want to look, but this is all the factors that we just talked about and this detailed scoring and all the notes about each one. So we are pretty thorough. Sorry. So, so what we ended up with, once we did our, um, level two screening and I should have used different nomenclature, but we end up with tier one priority projects and tier two priority projects out of the level two screening. So it's easy to get confused between the twos and the ones. But the tier one priority projects are the ones that we thought were the highest priority. They met most, the best score in all of our criteria and our factors. Um, and we ended up with eight, eight of those projects. Um, so there were eight groups, right? One, there was Sherman, Foxy Lottie, Dartmouth, um, an intersection project at Bannock and Oxford, Quincy Avenue, Floyd Avenue, Bates and Old Hampden. And each of those, um, some of those have sub projects, right? So, so an example would be Sherman. You don't need to do the whole length of Sherman at one time. We divided into two segments with two eighty-five being the, the dividing boundary. And have some, have an intersection project that you could do, uh, standalone as well. So so that's what we went through, um, and these are the scores now that worked out. And then this is, um, this is the map that shows those. I want to put in a couple, a couple of things I need to fix in this map before I, before you guys jump on me. So this, uh, purple circle is in the wrong place. This should be right here on Oxford. So, um, our GIS ended up putting it there, so I have to fix that. So Bannock and Oxford should be on Oxford, obviously. And I believe there's, um, one missing. My understanding, Maria is, I think I saw RFP out for Floyd west of, west of Broadway, uh, to get final design plans going on that. So really this, this thank you, Maria. This is Floyd and so it's Floyd the Inca. And this is the project that's in progress already. And that actually had a kind of an impact on why this east part of Floyd ended up being a more, a, a priority project for us, a tier one priority project. Okay, so that's a lot of firehouse information at all of you. And I know it was a lot of material to digest. We did get a, we did get one public comment already, um, and that was talking about, you know, more about the details of this. I'm happy to, to go into that. They were wondering hoping we could be a little more aggressive and looking for more high comfort facilities and um, the way I respond to that so far is what we really have been focused on now, uh, at this point is the where. Right? So where should we be thinking about making improvements and the general types? And then one of the next steps after this is to give more detail to the typology about what is a was a neighborhood bikeway? Like, what are the elements of that? What does a protected bike lane look like? And, um, to help us lay that out in a project description and maybe some example pictures of what we're talking about. Um, and then to help us cost it. And then once we're done with this, those would move into a conceptual design and final design process um, that the city public works department would run, uh, depending on how everything gets scheduled to, to forward. So with that, I will open it up. With that, I will open it up to any questions, comments, uh, input of to hear it. Maybe it's, maybe it's too much.
There you go, Colin.
I promise I'm not going to ask too many questions, but I, one of the items that we talked in the last meeting. Was incorporating um, social vulnerability indexes into the assessment of. Need and just because an area doesn't have. A path doesn't necessarily mean that they need that, you know, if that makes sense. I, I believe we had that conversation last time, Chris. Uh, and so I was wondering if you were able to look at any of that data and incorporate that into the study.
So, yeah, we took a look at that and we, we kind of turned us a little past the scope of what we're scoped to uh, do right now. Um, if um, if there were maybe a more easily digestible way to like pull that in, um, I'd be happy to do that, I think. So yeah, so that equity piece was tricky and um, we did talk about that last time. And so we sort of settled on geographic equity. But also um, the other thing we noticed was missing is north-south connectivity. So there's also kind of geographic directional stuff. And so that Foxy Lottie and the Sherman uh, projects kind of came out as like, hey, we need more north-south here. And, and they go across, uh, those two is particularly go across the whole city. Or, you know, the north-south part of the city. What you will notice is that this, this piece of Inglewood over here, um, this west side. Those projects didn't, didn't score very well. Um, some of them were complicated because they were involved a lot of agencies. Um, but there are things happening over there because uh, Denver and Inglewood are working on a few things together. Um, Denver is working on, I think, a low bike lanes or, or um, a couple of other things over there too. So. Anyway, thanks Colin. That's, that's kind of how that played out.
And I, I get that and trying to add additional work. So uh, appreciate the looking into it.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else right now?
Yeah, I actually have a quick question. Uh, I don't want to get too into the weeds on this. Uh, but I did have it like, so let me know if I'm in too in the weeds on this. Uh, a lot of where it crosses Floyd has like an offset and uh, going like. There's a big median there. So you can either go from Floyd up or, you know, uh, off of a lot of. Um, and so is a bike lane, like, I guess is that going to be addressed? So that's actually fluid for bikers. Otherwise, there's not really a way to get onto a lot of from a lot of.
Super great point. And that was um, when we identified that as a bike ride on the walk and wheel, that was one of the main things. That was a problem with that. And uh, Maria's group as uh, sagely um, looking ahead at that document. So that I believe that intersection redesign is part of the R F P that's out right now. And Maria could tell us more about that.
Sure, yeah. So are the, the project that Chris is mentioning would modify this intersection a little bit? Oh, thank you. This, that, that's helpful. So you can see here, it is an odd intersection. Um, and what we're doing, so you, it basically, if you're coming south on a lot of, it restricts the left turn movement. So you're only allowed to go right on there, but we know that people are coming around that island and still taking the left. So we're going to modify that. And so we'll, and then the intent would be is to add bike lanes along Floyd Avenue over to the civic center, to the west. Um, but, but to your point, I think that's a great point that where uh, we can mention this. We have not selected a co- a consultant yet to design this. But we can certainly give that feedback to them to say, okay, if we're planning this north-south connection along a lot of. How do we make sure that that dovetails with the east-west bike lanes? And then make it, it, you know, pedestrian friend or a bicycle friendly to cross across Floyd. If you're going either north or south on a bicycle.
Thank you so much. It looks like that area is begging for a traffic circle.
A weird location for sure.
Um, and then the other question is actually at the top of a lot of where it meets the Denver bike road. Um, I live right up there, so I'm very aware of this corner of Yale and a lot of. Uh, there's no stop sign. And so people cut that really close. So like for biker safety. I don't know if a stop sign on either side, obviously one would be Denver or one would be Inglewood, uh, would definitely. Oh, that's actually Delaware. So.
You mean right here?
Yeah, so that.
At this.
Yeah, people cut it really close coming from Yale onto a lot of, they just take that turn really close. Um, surprised there's something an accident there. It does slow down, but um, just thinking like if you're biking. It is an area where cars uh, and bikers could have incidents.
Yeah, that's great. That's great input. That probably ties back into. Public Works is thinking like, I, I don't know about stop signs. Um, you know, maybe you can do some center treatment that forces people to stay on the correct side. And that would be a kind of a public works check into it sort of item.
Yeah, well, we can certainly look at that. Yeah, we would not recommend stop signs, you know, um, because it's really a curve more than a intersection. So, but I think that's a great um, suggestion, Chris, is to look at center line striping and maybe some additional signage to keep people in the right. Side of the street.
Yeah, that's good input. Thank you, uh, Tim.
Anything else, member Whitney? You, you did not go into the weeds too deep. I think that was very, very reasonable. So, you know, uh, Chris.
I see Michelle.
Go ahead, Michelle. Go ahead.
Oh, well, I was just going to sort of uh, expand on that intersection. I think you need to cut back some of that brush at the corner too, or ask the homeowners or uh, something like that. That would definitely improve the visibility for both bikers and. Yeah, right there. Good suggestion.
Great. Did I see uh, Chris Dietrich? Did you have your hand up?
Uh, yes, I, I do. Thank you. Um, yeah, uh, thank you for, for presenting this. And uh, you know, I think there's a lot of, a lot of great things that are going on here and, and stuff that we've been talking about for a while in this committee and, and this walk and wheel plan is, it's really fun to see it. Start to be implemented here. Uh, I, I was kind of curious, you know, there's a couple of things on the uh, map. Let's see, not the tier one priority, but well, basically. Basically the Hamden and, and Broadway intersection. And you know, there's quite a bit going on over there. And there were a couple of things on these maps that are kind of close to there. I was just curious if any of these were being tied into that greater project that they're doing there, you know, regarding pedestrians across there, the size of that bridge. Um, and the way that they're redoing the um, path along the creek and the other connections. Uh, I, I didn't see a whole lot about that, but I know that there's so many things going on there. It was. Maybe there's an easy win. We can get out of it, or I was just curious if that would be coordinated.
Gotcha. Yeah, I'm just kind of pulling on here. You're, you're talking about this, the interchange project that's in, in progress right now. So in our, um, so I'll say a couple of things. So in our walk and wheel plan, we didn't have any project recommendations in this area. Um, that, that interchange project is looking at uh, pedestrian, you know. Improvements at the ramp uh, intersections. And I know there's been some discussion about the, you know, the, we're cutting Sherman off. And then how would the, how does a little dry creek trail work in there? So we haven't included any of that so far because um, that's kind of a thing that's going on, right? And I think the better venue um, for those, that input is to that project team directly, um, which I'm on that project team as well. And so um, any input uh, without you guys have, um, I think that's, that's better than like. Really wouldn't be one of our priority projects because it's not something the city's going to do on their own in the next few years, right? Does that make sense? Or am I off, off base there, Chris?
Well, I, you know, I just, I noticed there's kind of a, a gap on your map around that area. And it just seemed like that's under construction right now. And it seemed like an opportunity to do something there. So I, I was more or less curious if you guys are doing anything. I, I hope that there's at least enough room for bike lanes and, and a nice wide pedestrian like on that new bridge compared to the uh, narrow one we've got right now.
Gotcha. But so I do know there, I do know there aren't, um, there aren't plans for bike lanes on Broadway. I know that. Um, I know we've been focused on pedestrian safety, uh, especially there's quite a bit of pet traffic, especially now with the, the new development right on the south side. And um, making the, the Sherman, the Sherman route connection. Um, continuous and work well. I think those have been kind of the, the focuses, but I do appreciate your input about this sort of gap. We did put um, Old Hamden Avenue on here. Um, there is an, there's also, we had could give us videos. There's an R F P out. For a, a utility project along Old Hampton that also includes a complete streets concept design portion. And so that's been something that different projects have looked at over the years. That's really exciting that that's moving forward. Um, that's kind of in that area.
Yeah, so I'll just jump in. We'll definitely bring those quick comments back, uh, Chris. To, or member Diedrich, excuse me, to the project team for the interchange. Um, and uh, Chris Vogel saying is correct that we were not playing, we're not designing on-street bike lanes on Broadway. No, we've talked a little bit about that, but just given the speeds and the volumes, we are focused on a north-south, south route as the map shows along Sherman. So I think then the project um, really needs for the interchange project needs to make sure that that, how that crossing occurs. Um, and does that in a safe manner is a critical element.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. I, you know, I know we've looked at a couple of different designs for that intersection and looking at, you know, how, what are the different distances? Pedestrians need to go across there. And, and so um, I appreciate your feedback and, and it sounds like you guys got a pretty good handle on that. Um, I, I was also just curious, I, I know there were a couple of other attachments in the agenda about this with some wayfinding projects and some other things. And so I wasn't sure if we, I don't mean to move on from what you're doing, but I just wasn't sure if we were going to touch on those as well. Um, because some of my other questions were about where that slide fell into the priority list. The wayfinding, because it didn't seem to be necessarily found on the tier one or two too.
So yeah, I, I'd love to address that in a sec. And um, I think we can go to that and I can give you my thinking about that and we can have a discussion about it. Um, but before we move on from, from this piece, I see that um, Colin has his hand up.
I'll, I'll try to go quickly. Um, building on what Chris had said, I think um. The city is doing a project on Little Dry Creek in, in that area. Will that address? The connection in the plaza area as well, because the Little Dry Creek Trail is kind of. Ends um, no, up to the, up to the left at the um, at the dam. Where the inflatable dam and that, yeah, that plaza, I mean, there's not even a ramp going down into the parking lot. You kind of have to go around to the left. And it would be super cool if the Hamden bike path could somehow connect into that bike path. When you get up on to that plaza area, it just. Goes away right in there. Yeah. Um, I'm not sure. I know there's the project that's. I guess at least in planning, I'm not sure how far that project has gone um, for the reconstruction of the channel through there. Is that extend up into the plaza area as well?
Uh, that I don't know, but maybe Maria could answer.
Yeah, so we're, we're working with Mile High Flood District right now. Um, on the channel improvement. So we're putting in a, a safety grade at the end there on the um, yeah, right there. Who's ever got there?
That's me.
Oh, good. Thanks, Chris. And we're putting a safety grade there and then basically removing all of the concrete in the channel and bringing that back to a natural state. So um, Mile High Flood District is uh, overseeing and managing that project and the design. And we hope to construct that beginning next year. The improvements above that, so more of the park features, if you will. Are being undertaken by our parks department. And so they're lining up a landscape architect firm to uh, work on that and begin that design with the hope of. Um, you know, excuse me, looking at that plaza area. How the different trails will integrate with that. And so we'll certainly make a comment and feed that back to them that, you know. What happens with the trail? Because you're exactly right. It just kind of ends in no man's land there. But the improvements on the, if you will, above the waterline, um, will really be overseen by our parks de- division.
And, and Colin, I'll just jump in here real quick. That, that is absolutely a comment that we, we've discussed at E, uh, E-TAC. For several years, I want to say now, is that safe to say, member Diedrich? So it, it, it's not lost on us in terms of understanding that's a priority for us as well to try to find a better way. Uh, for that, so.
Yeah, just uh. Oh, nevermind. Cover it after we go over to the next one, sorry.
Okay, um, I, go ahead. Sorry, Neil.
No, oh, Chris, I, I was just going to say, uh, just the one comment that I had was, I think you had referred to uh, identifying, I think. Um, which one of these corridors or so on would be either, you know, have protected bike lanes. Uh, just bike lanes themselves or share rows. And I think in your matrix there, you do kind of refer to that there too. But I view this as almost a kind of a two-part equation where you essentially have. Information that this is what the city's planning in terms of, you know, different um, bike boulevards and so on. But then also understanding the treatments that are involved because of feedback. And I, I think you responded to that as well too. One of the citizen comments. Also looks into what can the city do in regards to not just having share rows, but in, in the opinion of many. Having protected bike lanes and or, you know, just dedicated bike lanes itself too. I know it's not always feasible, um, based on a number of, of reasons, but yeah. So, you know, is that something that we're looking to kind of identify or how were, what was your approach to that? You spoke to that a little bit.
Yes, I can, I can give you a little um, little intro on that. I'm just pulling up a few photos. So, so, so really when the walk and wheel plan got done in twenty fifteen. You know, shared lane markings were relatively new treatment. And um, they were being installed a lot of places. And I think what we found um. Over the country, over the time, um, is that just the markings themselves aren't, aren't always enough. Right? To get the feel, uh, to get the speeds down, to get people to share the space, to make it safer. And so there's been a movement um, to, to not just install markings on their own. But the conjunction with traffic calling, calling elements. And so, so, so they just like Sherman Street, say, for instance. So Sherman Street, um, when we originally thought it was like a, a neighborhood bikeway, we were thinking about share lane markings. It's, the speeds are kind of a, but now. Um, we're thinking, uh, maybe that needs to be a higher level of treatment. And we've been looking at that also with an eye to implementation cost and also to um. Well, I guess I'd call it like, what they call modifiability. Is that a word? So, so we're looking at things um, that like I'm showing in the picture here. So some of the ideas we would have to put in the, in the plan for recommendation like Sherman, as we described what it should be. Would be uh, photos like this that say, hey, you know, we should be considering curb extensions. Uh, we should be considering neighborhood traffic circles uh, to get speeds down. We should be considering, you know, median islands. And, and right now we're talking about all those things being. Um, being installed with sort of ten, like, I would call temporary items, but. There's sort of first phase implementation items, right? So like there's these flex posts, they're pretty cheap, they're easy to install. They don't require drainage modifications. Like as soon as you change curb lines. Everything goes to heck with the ramps and drainage and everything. But you get the same effect on, on speeds and reducing exposure for pedestrians, right? And so it's a, something that we could try and see what effect it has. And then they're easy to take out if they're not doing well, or they're easy to add more of, right? Uh, another thing would be um, these neighborhood traffic circles. You can kind of see here. That they're, they're made out of um, sort of rubberized asphalt curbs. And paint and some posts in the middle. And there's other ways to do these. They've, Portland shows them with, you know, planters in the middle and different things. Um, so there's a lot of, a lot of ways to do these, but these are low-cost interventions to sort of get a feel for. What kind of an impact these have and do they make the street feel better? Do they get the speeds we want? And what we're really looking for is speeds. Below twenty miles an hour and we want traffic below two thousand vehicles a day, right?
Right. And, and not to interrupt you real quick, Chris, but uh, that area right there, I'm familiar with that. And I.
Thirty-fifth, yeah.
Yeah, I think Denver had, I tried that. I don't know if it's like either a temporary or pilot. And if it was turned into something permanent. Um, on that, but is that, go ahead.
So I, yeah, in fact, I just rode my bike through here yesterday. And um, this isn't a picture from that, but they, they still look similar to this right now. And there were a couple they had where they had plant, big concrete planters in the middle. I think they found that those were hard to maintain and that they are sort of a hazard. Um, you know, so they've, they're, they're, everybody's learning, right? As we go, that's part of it. So. And I'm not getting directly to your question, I'm getting a second, but and then these are some protected bike lanes. Where we use flex posts and some rubberized curb to create that spaces are pretty inexpensive to implement. Uh, the big thing with protected bike lanes is there's usually curb use impacts, right? So if we have parking, if we have loading zones, if we have uh. ADA like uh handicap spaces, all those things need to roll into a sign that makes it a little more complicated. Um, but they add a lot of um, a lot of comfort and safety uh to the users. So. I want to share those and then I want to tell you where, where we're headed. Is so what we would do is we want to take this, this map. And we have project IDs, right? So we've got this, this nice uh spreadsheet as a start. And then we would add, you know, project descriptions, like what is it that this means? Is it neighborhood bike with these sort of things? Is it a protected bike lane, buffered bike lane? We'll base that on, you know, our knowledge of. The engineering design requirements, the most space we have and those things, and then that'll tie into the project cost. And so you'll have sort of a framework, right? Um, so we'll probably, we'll, we'll take, sorry, we'll take this map, which is really showing you what the tier ones are. And then I think we have an implementation app which has more by typology, right? That says, we think this is a neighborhood bike way, neighborhood bike ways have these things. Um, and then it would be up to an engineering uh team. At the next step to, to collect some traffic data to figure out. What exactly needs to be done to get the speeds where we want them? And um, what devices should be installed and all those are sort of a mix of art and science at this point. So it's a long way around. I answer, and I hope I answered it eventually.
No, you, you did, Chris. Yeah, and, and it's just something that I just wanted to highlight in terms of. You know, my experience in, in discussing this with, you know, the community. And everything that, you know, that I think they're ecstatic to see. A lot of this progress that's happening with, with these. Bike boulevards and everything that the city's doing to advance, you know, the, the bike lanes and doing that, but then it always seems to follow up with, well. Can we do this? And it's again, you know, asking the question of. Protected bike lanes and, and you know, as a preference to share rows and doing that. And obviously, like I said, there's challenges to that and, and that's exactly what I'm speaking to, which you, which you answered. So I appreciate that, yeah.
Great. And I, I do know, we do have this um Dartmouth Avenue bike lanes outlined as in progress and that was based on some information from. Uh, from Maria's group that they're contemplating a request proposals for design here and. I'm not privy to all the details of that, if that's protected bike lanes with, but uh Tim or Maria could probably give us a little more info if possible.
Yeah, I don't think we know right now. Um, we did get a grant for this area that's, that's highlighted in orange there. So I think we're still um trying to determine that and, and then put out an RFP for design services probably later this year, early part of. Right after the first of the year for that to see what, what makes sense. So. Um, we are building or Denver's um in the process where we started the Millan overlay on Zunai. So it starts there, yep, and goes north. So those buffered bike lanes will be installed within the next two weeks as well. So. We'll have on-street bike lanes on Zunai, so it might make sense if we can make it work there to have on-street bike lanes along Dartmouth as well.
Thank you, Maria. And um, yeah, I just wanna, I do want to say kudos. I know it's a little self-serving, but kudos to the public works from, there are a lot of um things that are happening right now. Um, that's really exciting. So I just want to say thank you for taking the initiative. Um, Michelle, I see you have.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I. Understand that I, I work part-time for a tree company, so that's part of where my um. Where, where I sit. And when you're talking about those protected bike lanes. You know, and oftentimes we have to, when we're doing our work, and it's not just tree people, it would be even the garbage people, movers, et cetera. I'll have to put out no parking signs so we can get access right there to the curb. And I'm not sure that some of our trucks wouldn't just mow over those things.
Yeah, it's great. So there, there are a lot of um friction points with implementation of these, so driveways um. Access for service, uh trash. Right? So if you have curbside trash pickup, how does that work? So those are all details, so. So I'm um on another project, I'm working with Denver very close on implementation of these kind of facilities and there are a lot of those little details that need to be figured out. And that happens sort of at the next phase, right? So what we're gonna say is, okay, we'd like to do this. This is what we think makes sense. And then when a engineering team would go in, they would look at all that, the access needs. All that and see like how much could be protected and is it feasible and? Um, you know, how would we do it? But those are great points and that's come up a lot in, in our previous work.
Well, and it's, it's sort of interesting because uh I live along Dartmouth and so um. Like I said, I work for a tree company, so I think about, there's a lot of trees along, because there's, there's residences uh in part of Dartmouth that I live. But then uh what we're talking about down further west where the orange is, that's a lot of industrial and you have a different problem down there. With um, you know, three-wheelers and things like that, because there's a lot of industry down there. So. I, I'm glad to hear you're thinking about all those sort of uh little details that will. Um, like I said, I'm sure my, my, some of my trucks could just mow those things over, not that we'd want to, but we could.
I'm sure you would. I'm sure you could. Yes. Yeah, and the devil's in the details with those. I mean, they work really well or they work really poorly depending on. You know, how they get specifically designed um with turning templates, what kind of trucks you want to accommodate, all that stuff. Okay, um, I, I do, I do want to move on. Neil, I know that um Chris Dietrich had asked about the tier two one. And I, I just wanted to go to that quickly, if we have time.
Yeah, just as long as we don't ignore member Whitney, he's got his hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah.
I didn't see that.
Yeah, I just had a question. So there's some places where it says pedestrian improvements. We talked a lot about bike lanes. Um, and kind of the share, like just biking. Uh, but the, the two major ones, Sherman and Fox and slash Alati uh are for pedestrian improvements as well. What are um, I, what are we thinking there? Like what specifically will be done?
So, so I'll give you a sense. So the. The neighborhood bikeway uh facility type kind of is a double whammy, right? So its intent is really to calm traffic, bring speeds down, reduce cut-through traffic, make it like neighborhood traffic only. And with that come a lot of pedestrian benefits as well. Um, we, we usually put in like, uh, we'll put in median islands or curb extensions that shorten crossing distances. We'll see speed reductions in the order of. You know, five to eight miles an hour, average speed is just pretty decent. And um, so that's kind of how, how we're thinking of that. And then there are some specific projects. So like um Fox at Oxford or Bannock at Oxford here, which, you know, we've been looking at, how do we? Make it safer for pets and bikes to get across at these unsignaled locations, right? And so uh, that's kind of our thinking is some of these projects have multiple benefits and the protected bike lanes can too. Um, they tend to have a small traffic calming effect, but not the same as the neighborhood bike way treatments and they each have a place in hierarchy of um. Of streets, right? Like you wouldn't do a neighborhood bike way treatment on Dartmouth, it's just too busy and it's a, a, a regional kind of facility or sub-regional, right? But Sherman or uh Floyd East of Broadway, uh maybe those are more applicable. So that's kind of how we're thinking about that.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I have just another further comment on that. I, I appreciate you bringing that up. Actually, you know, it's, it's interesting because the Lottie and, and Fox have some of the skinniest sidewalks in town. And so I, I think that if there's an opportunity for us to um. Do something about that, if we're gonna make that, you know, put some focus on that area, I think. Some additional something uh for the pedestrians would be good. I know it's really expensive. We're not going to tear up all the sidewalks all the way through necessarily, but. Uh, you know, we had a presentation a couple of meetings back from the um. Oh my gosh, the name just escaped me, the mid-century modern neighborhood over off Dartmouth, uh, but they were talking about. Thank you. Yes, they were talking about something about some widened striping or because they have similar sidewalks or no sidewalks in some cases where. Uh, they were doing something to increase uh pedestrians, specifically friendly uh movement throughout that neighborhood. So I don't know if there. Might be a corollary, that one was interesting because they literally had some students that wanted to do a study and come and like put some striping in and study it for free. So. Maybe we can do something like that that ties in with this plan. Uh, you know, we might have some opportunities there as well. So just wanted to. Take you back on that comment. Thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you. Do you uh, do you see anyone else with a question?
Looking right now. I don't at this time. Feel free to just jump right in if I don't. Acknowledge you here.
All right, I'm, we can come back. Um, I do, I, I know I've taken a lot of time. I really appreciate your patience. This is great discussion. I do want to get, um, talk a little bit about the tier two and the wayfinding signage project, so. Um, so basically that these tier two projects are ones that didn't make our cut, right? Uh, they weren't like our top projects, doesn't mean they aren't important or they not, aren't implementable, they just weren't our top ones that we wanted to focus on. And I would love it if anybody, if anybody sees any here that they really think should be. A tier one, I love that input to the wayfinding signage projects. So we, we sort of. As we went and scored these, um. Some of them scored pretty well, some were more, more down in our list, but. We felt like they really almost are a separate list of things um that. It might be attacked differently. Some of them involve um dealing with the Parks Department or South Suburban Park and Rec. Or City of Inglewood. And, and some of them go with other projects, so like this Dartmouth Avenue one. That goes with the Dartmouth project that we were just talking about, right? Like those things would happen at the same time. So that's how we've sort of put these down here as a separate item right now. And really focused more on. Sort of on the ground infrastructure as our top tier one priority projects rather than wayfinding. Um, knowing that, like say if we did neighborhood bikeway and Sherman, like wayfinding signage would come along with that. So I'd, I'd love to get input on if, if we think that's, that's sort of wrong-headed or if, you know, some of these should be moved up. I know we did hear this big dry creek one. It's probably the, the only one. Um. We really heard quite a bit, we heard about it at our public open house um. At the block party, people were saying, hey, I didn't even know those connected. So maybe we were, maybe we were wrong to kind of bin this down and that should be up, but. Um, remember Dietrich? I know that was one of your questions. Or you had questions.
Yeah, I, I appreciate you bringing it up and I, I was kind of unclear from the way this was presented, whether the wayfinding things were considered. Tier two or if they were in their own bucket and uh, you know, sort of answered some of that, uh, you know, I. I'm not gonna want to dive into the scoring too much, but you know, some of these are higher than some of the things that are on the tier one list, um, uh, just a couple of them, but. Uh, you know, I, I understand there's probably some complexities with those and you, there was lots of criteria and you guys did hard work on that one. Uh, the little dry creek trail, you know, I think a couple of these, that one in particular, um, as Neil mentioned, has been a hot topic for a long time. And for good reason, because we have this great greenway, Greenbelt Trail next to the creek that just disappears. And you know, there's a lot of history from that area between where it disappears and where it reappears. Um, and, and I understand there are some things that. Because of that history make it difficult to make a really nice uh connection without the, you know. Collaboration of lots of different parties, but I think that um just as a simple wayfinding uh thing. You know, not necessarily raising the river up and putting a nice bike path next to it like we've seen in some other plans, but just, you know, some signage. Uh, and things that would help people um get over to the bike path. You know, we talked about Floyd Avenue, uh, you know, even just some signage and, and something that. Maybe it's some striping, uh, uh, just a clear path through that parking lot to get over to Floyd, I think would be a huge improvement that can probably be done with some signs and some paint. Um, so you know, I'd, I would love to see a little more attention on that. Uh, I'm not the one who gets to choose a priority, but that's a recommendation on my behalf. Based on a lot of feedback we've had. Um, also, I, I uh, just to point out that Broadway and Gothic Theater Crossing, um, I, I see that's on the tier two list and, and I'm. You know, I think that since we've done some work at that Broadway and Floyd intersection and adding the crosswalk on the other side, I'm not sure if we have a, you know. Data on uh reduction in issues because of that cross uh, you know, area right there. Um, but it was a hot topic and, and it seems to maybe not be as hot of a topic lately, but also. The Gothic hasn't really been very open for the last two years. So uh, you know, there's that too, so. Uh, just to comment on that. Uh, thank you for coming back to this stuff. Appreciate it.
I think I did have a note there that um, we had heard that the DDA secured a grant. But we weren't sure the details and I was getting, we, we didn't know. Who should we talk to or do you guys, does anybody here have any knowledge about that? For the mid-block crossing for the Gothic?
Yeah, I can chime in a little bit, Chris. So um. We were focused more on the existing crosswalk down in the thirty-four hundred block. We were contemplating putting in a grant application to the revitalizing Main Streets C dot grant um for the Gothic crossing to, to actually build that. But um, we didn't get it in in time. So we were actually in, and it's the DDA, so. Our um executive director of the DDA is, is kind of leading the charge and right now we're focused on the existing um mid-block crosswalk and looking at putting in a hawk signal there. In lieu of the flashing uh. Yellow beacons that are in place that are pet actuated.
Gotcha. There we are. Okay. Well, thanks for that update. Yeah, and um, remember Dietrich, thanks for the input. I, I think um. I mean, you know, what, what, what we wanted to do here at the end of screening is have a manageable list, right? That someone could comprehend and bite into and get things done. And if that list is like. Thirty projects long, then it gets hard and. And they have synergies with each other, right? So like when one project gets, uh, so the Dartmouth piece, right? And maybe the wayfinding piece you've done the same time. And then. If Floyd West to Broadway, maybe that means it's time to dig into Floyd East of Broadway. So we're, we're trying to do is create groups of projects instead of like one through ten and priority. Um, but maybe some of these um. You know, these are not hard projects to do. Usually this require a little bit of coordination. Um, and thinking through, um, so I'll talk, I, I'll take that um input back. I appreciate it. I think um, community planning development and public works and, and we'll kind of think that through. And see, you know, um, how we want to handle that, if you want to move some of these up. Um, but thank you for that, that input. Okay, um, that's, uh, that's, that's basically all I had. I mean, the. Next steps. Were um, that website survey I talked about, we want to bring the input together and then we're gonna rip into cost estimates. I would say um. You know, we have a November fifteenth city council study session. So I think um, you know, whenever the deadline is before that for materials. Um, to be in, that's when we want to be done with our draft, like, hey, here's the, the draft recommendations, here's the costs. I mean, all that, so we can, we can communicate that to city council real well. Um, so we have, you know, a couple, three weeks to kind of get on this, uh, maybe, maybe three. And um, and then we go to planning and zoning public hearing on December seventh. So those are the next steps. And as always, um, if anybody here wants to reach out, I know it's a lot of information at once. Feel free to, to take a look, to digest it. To call me, to email me, to call or email John. Um, we can talk it through and, and get as much inputs. We want to make this. As good as it can be for, for what it is, right? Which is about finding things that the city can do, right? And make things better uh in the short term. So. Um, with that, I'm gonna stop sharing. And I'll open any other questions or I'm, I'll cede my time.
Member Diedrich, I, I noticed that your hand was up. Is, do you still have a question there or comment?
Uh. Yeah, you know, I, I was gonna hold it in, but since you asked, uh, I, I'm just kind of curious. Uh, you know, we got the planning and zoning people on, on this call as well and, and thank you guys for being here. Uh, I was just kind of talking a little bit to that city center area with the Little Dry Creek Trail, but. There's a lot of stuff that's. Coming in that city center area, some redevelopment, like quite a bit um on, on both sides of Hampton, but primarily the city center area. And, and so I was just kind of curious if you guys had input on maybe some things that might be coming. That maybe we should maybe de-prioritize some things on this list or prioritize some. Um, based on the way that some of the development is going to be coming in, in that area and, and some of the changes that are being made. So I, it just. Thanks for asking, Neil. I, I really wanted to ask that question, so. Oh, do you guys?
Any comments from our P and C friends here?
I think I've got my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Michelle, I didn't see that. Go ahead, please.
No, it's okay. Well, and I don't have my last name up, so you might don't really know who I am. Um, I, I'm actually um chair of planning and zoning and. We are going through uh. Uh, multiple processes right now. Um. The city center redevelopment and that whole thing is basically uh in the hands of. We approved it, it's in the hands of uh the city and some, some consultants. Uh, I don't know exactly, maybe Colin or Kate, you have a status update on did city council approve everything we did or not? I, I'm a little unclear on that.
I don't have an updated status on that either.
I can I can weigh in.
Thank you, Wade. Yeah, perfect. Thank you, Wade.
So yes, city council has. Adopted the. Essentially the rezoning. Right. Framework for the property. And that essentially takes the property back to an MEB one. Mixed use. Zone and it removes the planned unit development classification. So what the next steps are is actually working on a master development agreement, which will get into. More detail with regard to each parcel within the city center area. Which uses are. Best fit for those separate parcels. There's. You know, initial plans, we haven't seen a final overall layout of. Of the streets and those sorts of things yet. There are going to be. Biggest changes to Inglewood Parkway. As it comes into the city center portion where Civic Center is right now. And and so. What's being looked at and talked about now is how. The pedestrian and bike connections. Will work to make sure that those. Are new parcels are connected. And it's it's more pedestrian friendly into that entire area. So. That's where we're at now. We've just, like I said, adopted the rezoning framework for that area. You know, there are a lot more details to come when. We talked about. You know, sort of how the parcels are laid out with streets. Bike lanes and that sort of thing. So that is all yet to forerest. So hopefully we will. Get into more detail into early to mid part of next year. On. On those sorts of things when city council really works and digs into the overall development agreement. Back units.
Thank you, Wade. We have also talked extensively about parking and parking ratios. And. Which is a tough question because one of our. Commissioners made a really astute comment. She said, Inglewood's got plenty of parking. It's just a matter of where the parking is. And I think that that sort of sums sums up the the situation with parking. We have. While while they're working on the master development plans and working with the consultants and things, planning and zoning has now moved on to. Our chapter sixteen of our Inglewood Development Code. So. We've sort of done our work so far and will be returning back to. The development of Inglewood City Center once that master development agreement is further down. Does that help?
One quick follow up, I guess, maybe for waiter. Anybody else that might know, is that master development agreement? Proceeding and is that been signed then? Or I think the first step was to get the zoning adjusted. That part it sounds like has been finalized. So then are we entering into that agreement or is that still in process?
We. There I am. We are. In process of getting that ready to start conversation with the council. So it hasn't really effectively begun yet. In terms of our our discussions at the council level. So. That's that will be the next step coming up. Hopefully first of the year and mid next year. We'll get underway with that.
Very good. Remember, Dietrich, did that? Help answer your your question there?
Sort of. You know, we we don't have a lot of a lot of projects going through there for for the plan that was presented. It's kind of just a a pedestrian. Down Inglewood Parkway is listed on there, which I think is good. You know, I I'm. I'm more curious about the process. I'm curious how we can help out. I I have what, you know, some questions about it, like how much, you know, input are we able to have on the on the process? If if there's, you know, somebody else doing the master development planning and stuff. So I'm kind of curious about that, you know, how we can have some input or or what. We might be able to dictate depending on. What the extent of the work that's being done and the timelines and schedules, you know, I I understand some of this public, some of it's private. And so there's a lot going on there. But I I think we've got an opportunity. I'd love to be a part of it.
Well, I I can tell you that we always welcome comments from the public at our meetings. And most of them these days are indeed oftentimes are are public hearings. So. You can chime in anytime you wish. That would be fantastic. We'd love to hear from you.
Councilman Sierra, I I noticed your hand was up.
Mentioned that once we get into just the writing of the master development, I know that ultimately city council has to. Sign off on it or at least approve it. So I do believe that we are going to be asking for input from our boards and commissions on. Many aspects of what's going to go into that document. So I do expect to have. Not only the citizens, but also our boards and commissioners involved in that.
Okay, very good. Okay, Colin, go ahead.
One last follow up. The downtown development authority would be a good place to. Chime in on also, I think they'll be obviously heavily involved with that with those decisions.
Very good. No other comments at this time. Thank you, Chris, for walking us through this. Very insightful. We really appreciate that. And really kind of give us a path to the future here of what Inglewood could look like. So. You're totally welcome. Thank you for having me. Absolutely there. So, yeah. Very good. There's not anything else on this topic? I think we can move back to the agenda. Michelle, if you can do that, appreciate that. Okay. Very good. So ETAC chairperson appointment. So, yes, I think this was discussed at the last meeting as well, and I think. Basically, member Canadisson was. Was voted would be the next ETAC chair. So happy to see that. I'm 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 glad. I'm hopeful this is a peaceful transfer of power. So Greg and so. But really appreciate that, but I know there have been some. I guess some discrepancy regarding our terms. And I just wanted to talk to that right now. So. And I think, Mr. Hooce, you had sent, if you can click on that, Michelle, please. Thank you. Yeah. I'm Deputy Director Hooce there, just referring to that. So for for some reason there, they had. Myself there as basically ETAC chair until February twenty or of twenty two. But I've been in this capacity since September twenty nineteen. And so my two years is up and. And pretty much I would like to pass the pass the torch on. That's my. Feelings on that there too, for for a few reasons, but mostly time related and and doing that. But it would just be. Helpful if if. Another member would take that up and at the last ETAC meeting, apparently there was a vote. And that moved on to member Can Addison. So Greg, I guess at this time, you know, if you want to speak to that and. And what are your thoughts about just transferring over to you?
And Chair, could we just, we have a little bit more information. Could we?
Yeah.
Share that before you we jump into a discussion?
Sure.
Tim has some information to share. So I'll let him speak briefly.
And excuse me, Mr. Chair, is this more, I mean, I I'm sure those of us here from. Finanzing or happy to stay to the end of the meeting, but I don't want to also.
Yeah.
Be in a place that we shouldn't really be in into.
Not at all, Michelle. I was just going to say that. Thank, thank you, P and Z for joining our meeting and we appreciate that. You do, if you want to sign off, you're more than welcome to at this time. Okay. You know, if you're but you're also more than welcome to stay and 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 see how how things, the inner workings of ETAC too. I want to be.
Right.
Open and transparent with that.
I I just want to make sure it's not sort of. Almost executive session kind of stuff that. It's all public anyway, but.
Absolutely, yeah. But you're more than welcome to sign off at this time. We really appreciate it, your attendance.
Well, I I can tell you that I thought that this meeting was very interesting. It's. I think maybe I should visit a few more of the other commissions meetings because it's very interesting to hear things that you don't hear about in the whole world that you live in. So. It was nice.
It's it's nice not to be stylized and to actually just. Overlap and do that and just like understand, oh, this is what's going on in other committees and. It really gives a lot of insight to the city in in general. So absolutely, I agree with you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks.
Go ahead Deputy Director Hooce, you you have the floor there too, unless there's anything else you'd like me to read the the memo that you sent out.
Yeah, I can give you a little more background. Michelle's been doing some. Looking back on the meetings from twenty nineteen to make sure we have the dates right. What she found was there was a an attempt to have an election in the February twenty nineteen meeting for a chair and vice chair and it wasn't. Forum at that time. So it got delayed until April. And that's actually when the the last vote of the chair and vice chair for the committee was where member Sarno, member Lewis were. voted as chair and vice chair at that time. So it was the meeting in May is actually when their term started. So it has been over two years now through the term. So we definitely it's time to. Time to reelect the members there. And with the election of. Member Madison as the chair, we also made the committee needs to select a vice chair as well. Those two positions typically get selected at the same meeting. Those are the two officers for the committee. So we recommended to elect a vice chair this evening to serve alongside member Madison. For that. Basically, what we're recommending is to go through the February twenty twenty two. Meeting there and then the new committee gets appointed each February. A recommendation would be to to have the election in February of each year to to have the the chair and vice chair be appointed in those meetings. But there's always a. At the start of the committee appointment there, so we don't have this mid midterm election show that kind of confused everything. So our. What that would be to get a chair tonight to through through February and then. Have another vote in in February for the chair and vice chair.
So if I'm understanding this correctly. Your suggestion is so for the vice chair. And and just to clarify as well here too. So what's in the article two there, item two for under officers? Officers of the committee shall be elected for a two year. Term. No officer shall serve in this incapacity for more than two consecutive terms. So it's very possible. Vice Chair Lewis, who is in in attendance this evening, could very well be. Also going for a second term. And so. But we would still need to vote on that as well. Is that? The understanding.
The the city council appoints the members for the for year term every February. There's a staggered three, three members and then two members each year get appointed for the four year term. So. The member Louis could become an officer again, basically without saying he could serve as an officer for another two year term if he wanted to.
Okay. Okay, so is your suggestion then is that I continue on as chair until February? Is that what your suggestion is here?
I know, I think member Madison, if he wants to serve, I I think the goal would be to have another election in February to kind of reset the timing of it. So the two year period starts in February rather than in September, October, to have a start when the committee is. Formed each when the appointments are made, then there's a. Consensus among the. Current members there of the chair and vice chair. So the thought would be to. Have someone serve for these next four or five months here and then have an election to get things back on the schedule of every February.
Okay, and so so potentially then it it would be that it could very well be that member Can Addison becomes chair. Following this meeting and then we reconvene what would be in February. For what would be. Elections at that time to kind of just set. A starting point that would be beneficial for the committee and the city in terms of February. For both chair and vice chair.
Correct. Yeah, typically the the appointments of the officers are in February when the the committees are formed and the the members are appointed. There's. That's when the officers are appointed at that same same time. So it sets the the. Annual appointment thing with the appointment of members.
Okay. Okay, I. I think I'm in agreement with that. Member Can Addison though, but you know, again, opening this up to con discussion for the group. Is there anything else that anybody else from the group would like to comment? On this in terms of. A new ETAC chair and moving forward perhaps with the elections is and as Deputy Director Hooce mentioned here.
I do have a simple question about it. Let's say member Can Addison serves this four month period. And then is elected, could he be reelected again the after that in the following February? Or would that be complicated because he served a five month term? And it's actually just a shortened term since. The bylaws state that it's a two year term, not the five month term. So it's like an interim term.
Correct. Yeah, that is where the confusion is by having it be midterm like this where the officers were elected midterm. It does create a little confusion there. I I think the way I'd interpret that was that he could be reelected in February for another term. If he wanted to continue to serve after February, that that would be a. Reasonable law thing to do.
Okay. Sounds good. I just wanted to make sure we're not shortchanging him on his future potential as chair.
It's very considerate, member Whitney. Thank you for that. Yeah. Very good. Member Can Addison, do you have? Any comments, any feedback to this conversation?
Just one question on something that you said Deputy Director Hooce. So. Vice Chair Lewis was elected in February of twenty nineteen. Is that right?
Actually, it was in. It was the April twenty nineteen meeting where a member Sarno and member Lewis were elected as chair and vice chair. So what happened, the minutes from the meetings were incorrect. Michelle looked through those and the minister inaccurately looked like what happened. That meeting, it was actually in April when the election was, the minister incorrect and she updated that to be, that's where the confusion about September was. It was actually April. It wasn't September. So it's been well over two two years now that they've been chair and vice chair.
Okay, okay. So then do we need to have vice chair elections tonight? It wasn't on the agenda, so it feels like a pretty big thing to try to do. So we should wait a little bit. Yeah, okay. Okay, I don't have any other questions. Any other questions from anybody?
I guess, remember Can Addison, so there's an understanding here and of course for the group then. Following tonight's meeting, then. The role of chair will fall to you. Beginning immediately, I I suppose, right? And okay, and then and then we'll go from there. Okay. Yeah. Well, very good and congratulations, Greg. All right. I know you're competent, capable, capable, and I I'll have like a whole speech following you as you get sworn in to. To, you know, upside that. Director Dandrea, go ahead, please.
Yeah, so it would really be at at the. Committee's discretion if they want to have a new vice chair election at the next meeting. Or if we just want to keep member Lewis in there as the vice chair until the until February. I think given where we are, we can. I I know it's demanding to be the vice chair role, but I think he he'd probably be okay with continuing for the next few months. And then maybe we shoot for February for new new elections for both positions, just a suggestion, but it's totally up to the committee.
And and for the sake of ease, I think that's acceptable as well to Director Andrea for that, your suggestion there. Just so we're not constantly in that. I mean, we're. What, four months away? So I don't think that would be an issue as well too. So. Okay, well, very good. Well. Thanks for that and. And yeah, good to have you on on board. And um yeah, good to have you on on board, um Chair Can Addison, I just I'll say that. Future chair, so, all right, very good, let's move on to the next agenda item. And it is for E-TAC reappointments and vacancies, okay. Yeah, and I think this pretty much just reiterates what we had discussed here on on a certain level here regarding um members expiration for our terms. And doing that and um it's an overview here, all members are eligible for reappointments. And uh pretty much if you're interested, please reapply at there's a site there, send a letter of recommendation uh from Chair Can Addison. Um to Michelle there and our deadline would be November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. So with that, I I want to bring to light, um and some of you might already know this, but uh Member O'Connell has resigned from the committee. As well too, um so we wish her well on her endeavors, really appreciate her her insights uh while she was on the committee. Want to thank her for that, but also uh speaking of that, uh member Whitney, who's an alternate member. Um requested becoming what would be a a permanent member on the committee. So that is something that I would I can do as well, or if it's member Can Addison regarding a letter of recommendation. Is that would be the next step to have uh member Whitney elevated to a permanent permanent member?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the process is. Um Michelle, I don't know if you know.
That's correct, um he will need to reapply, we only need that letter from either Chair Can Addison or. Um members Sarno, whoever wants to write it, it's fine, I talked to the city clerk's office, so whoever wants to send it to me, it's okay.
Good, great.
Could we pass the motion so they don't even have to write an email?
I'm sorry?
Could we pass the motion?
Um no, it's kind of like an application and the um city clerk's office, they decide whether or not he becomes a regular member.
Okay, great, so.
Ben, real quick, because.
Yeah, go ahead.
Be confused here, um. Uh I didn't think that, once you're an alternate, I thought once there's an open position or even if there's a, if there's not a full. Uh quorum, uh the alternate becomes a voting member, so are we just saying in terms of just elevating somebody from an alternate to a. Uh regular member of of this commission that we have to go through that process, but.
That's correct, so um.
Tonight, right?
Yeah, member Whitney is able um to vote and do all of that, but he won't become a regular member until February of twenty twenty-two, yeah.
Okay, interesting, okay.
When reappointments happen.
And and so just to reiterate that again there, Michelle, basically, member Whitney will have to go to apply for that. From an alternate to what would be permanent or regular member um online there, correct?
No, he would only need the letter from either.
Recommendation, I see.
That's right.
Okay, very good, okay. Um I could do that, uh future Chair Can Addison as my parting. Parting, parting task, action item as as chair.
I'm happy to take care of it, thanks Neil.
Thank you, thank you for that, yeah.
Well, thank you both chairs, I appreciate it.
I didn't I didn't know, oh go go ahead, Reverend Diedrich, go ahead, yeah.
Maybe Tim can write it for you and you can send it in, right? I'm just I'm not suggesting that for the record, though.
Right, right, no, but it was interesting because I do think, you know, member Diedrich, going back in time, I I recall that we had. Conversations about that in terms of elevating members once uh, you know, if there was a vacancy on the committee, then essentially. You know, who was an alternate member elevating them and we discussed that at the E-TAC meetings there. Perhaps there was a follow-up letter as well that went along with that, following that, but I think that was part of it, so. We were just gonna talk you up a bunch, uh member Whitney and say like, yeah, I think he's worthy of being a permanent member here. But I guess we don't even have to go through that, so.
Um, well, thank you for sparing me.
Okay, all right, well, it feels good, I think, to just get this situated because um. I think there had been some, you know, discrepancies and over time and everything and I kind of had a feeler out there for. You know, when two years was up and everything and and thought like, well, in the first meeting, Deputy Director Hus, to go back to that. I think I physically was called out as being Chair Sarno was, I think, in September, um so. You know, with that, I believe there was some few months off or or meetings were canceled at the time, but essentially. Yeah, I I felt that it was absolutely at least two years that I had been chair, so I'm glad to pass it on, glad it's going to member Can Addison. And uh we can sort this all out and kind of get um realigned, if you will, within the committee on terms for everyone, so. Okay, anything else? Oh, go ahead.
The meeting minutes were incorrect and we found out, we've got those corrected now to actually show what things actually occurred there, so let's um.
Well, thank you for that, Deputy Director Hus, yeah, um it feel good, it feels good, just like I said, just to have that reset, so we understand this is where we're at. And um and it just, it's a clear path forward, so thank you. Okay, with that, let's move on to the next agenda item, director's choice, Director DeAndrea.
Yeah, um I I already updated you on the Windermere bike lanes and the Zuny bike lanes, so. Um I'll leave the project updates at that. I think the only other thing is we need to check with the city clerk's office. We actually have uh Veterans Day as a city holiday and that's when our next meeting in November lies. So I'm not sure if we can hold a meeting, if there's interest in in perhaps moving it. Uh but we'll get a communication out to the committee tomorrow, uh but just to plant a seed in your head that we may need to move it. Um maybe either a week ahead, probably given Thanksgiving, um or maybe even sometime during that week. We could move it to like Tuesday or Wednesday night of that week, so just wanted to give a heads up on that, but otherwise no further information, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Director DeAndrea, for that, yeah. Okay, uh moving on to your chairperson's choice. And I think this ties into Director Andrea, what you're talking about with that November eleventh date. I think courtesy of member Can Addison, who sent me, and if I can go, let me try to zoom out of here and get to my window. But there was a correspondence, we we received reach out from and uh member Can Addison, if you can help me out here.
Yeah, M M R A Metropolitan Realty Advisors or something like that, they have a couple of properties south of Hampden. Um sort of towards uh the EarthTrex Climbing Gym is the mount, the uh the place over there that sticks out in my mind. Um that they're developing into residential um units.
I believe, yeah, and that was Colin Weddellworth that reached out to us, so um he initially wanted to present tonight, I believe. On um what's kind of some of the developments there, what they're working on and trying to kind of integrate that with what are. E-TAC and and some of the facilitating some connections, of course, and understanding what their plans are and our group as well too. So that was it, he wanted to present, but because P N Z was here this evening, thought it would not be um, thought it would be a conflict. And so we pretty much uh pretty much responded saying that yes, we would still be available for for this presentation, but at a later date. Which we initially said was November eleventh. So if we do want to move that date, we'll probably have to reach out to uh to Colin and uh suggest that, you know. Just keep him informed of that if he still wants to present at that time. So is there anything else, member Can Addison, that you add in regards to his presentation or uh to the group? Okay, yeah, and I think that's, you know, a- again, if that's, there's any comments on that, but um. I guess we can send the correspondence or whomever to the city or who have you about uh what is being proposed here, but. This is absolutely the information that's just come through recently for us, uh the outreach from this uh from this person here and this group. So. Uh let's see here, also, and I just want to finish up with, you know, I I don't want to just uh. Just be the person just talks about the potholes out there, I I just also want to commend some of the good things that I see in the city there too and. And I've noticed that, you know, there's been some striping that's gone down, I've noticed that there's some backplates that were changed for the traffic signals. You you know, and and that, and so just want to point out that it's noticed and it's um. It's an improvement and um so we appreciate that. Want to give an attaboy to Chris Groth, even though he's not here right now, but if that's is the group and that's that's doing this and of course, Public Works in general. Really appreciate that, I think it's very visible and it's becoming more so.
Thank you, and I'll pass that on, it is Chris coordinating that.
Excellent, okay. Well, thank you, that's all I have, so let's move on to the committee members' choice. And uh we'll start off with member Diedrich.
Uh thanks Neil, uh so a couple of, a couple of comments and a couple of questions. Um I understand that Vice Chair Lewis is not here and we may have needed to take further action in our last meeting with a. You know, chair election and stuff, but I just wanted to offer up that uh you know, if member Can Addison is unavailable and and member Lewis. Uh you know, having not had a replacement selected, I'd be happy to, you know, fill in as backup as that uh if something happens. So just want to offer that up, I'm happy to help out there. Secondly, uh with member Can Addison and member Sarno being up for reappointment. I have appreciated working with both of you guys and I um encourage you to reapply, it's been, it's been good having you on the board and I like working with you guys. So stick around, please. Let's see, and then two questions, I think these are probably both for uh Maria, um so. First of all, just i- if you had any general update on the trash haulers study uh and kind of where that's at. Um I'm I'm avoiding that first word in front of it because it's a little bit leading, uh but the uh study around the trash hauling policies. And and companies in the city.
Sure, I was gonna add that to our next agenda, so proposals are due on November fourth. So we do have the RFP out again, um and we had four companies attend our mandatory pre-proposal meeting. Four different waste hauling companies, so um we responded to questions and they're now formulating their proposals. And we'll we'll see those on November fourth, so we'll be able to give a more robust update on just what we received at our next meeting. And then um also lay out, I'll put a formal memo together to lay out the kind of the timeline for what we anticipate doing that public outreach. And information before we would take that to a vote uh uh in front of the city council.
Thank you, uh second question for you, uh um I, so I live in an area that is zoned. And I've seen a lot of action with duplexes and triplexes coming into the area and. One of the things that I am happy to see is the, and this comes from questions from the neighbors that I've also noticed around, right? They are paving the alleys behind some of these redevelopment areas, which is something that's kind of helping towards a long-term, you know, thing that we've been working towards. And uh the the question from, actually from one of my neighbors was um, you know, they. The situation is that on their block, the alley was paved and it seemed like it was at a height. And angle that may have not necessarily made sense for the alley. Um and you know, I said, I'll I'll go ask about it and I understand that there's a lot of gravel alleys and they may not even be. You know, quite graded at the right level as they are anyways necessarily, depending on when they've been graded and and lots of things and so. You know, I said, I'll I'll just go ask how they figured that out, and so I was just curious if you could enlighten me a little bit about how that process works.
Sure, is that around Twenty-Ninth and Bannock or so?
It is.
Okay, yeah, and Mayor Protem is familiar with this one as well. Um and I I'll actually turn it over to Tim to talk a little bit about this, he has more detailed information and if you could just give a brief. Um update on that, Tim.
Sure, yes, that is a development paved alley there and uh the question is, we're verifying that they paved it in accordance with their construction plans. The plans show that the grade of the concrete should match to the grade as the revert those are before. But we're gonna have them verify that to make sure, because it does look a little raised when they're out there, it does appear like it doesn't match into what was there before. So we're gonna get the asphalt elevations on edge to verify that that alley was constructed in accordance with the approved plans and make sure it's done right. But the alleys are paved to make sure that they drain, we want to make sure the alley, water in the alley drains to the lower end of the alley. So there are times where sometimes the uh the alley is a little bit higher than the adjacent driveways to make it uh, make sure that the alley can drain. The driveways aren't, they weren't always designed to be uh the same elevation in the alley, some are higher, some are lower. We've got a few properties that are a little bit lower than the actual alley, that creates some issues at times, but uh we try to make sure that the alley itself drains. So no water from the alley will will flow onto anybody's private property, to keep all the water from the alley draining out into the right of way.
All right, well, appreciate that you guys, it sounds like I'm not the first person to bring it up, so uh I appreciate you guys looking into it. And and yeah, I did, I did go by there and you know, there are some uh you know, driveways that are about a a full foot lower than that concrete level. Kind of in that area, but you know, if the water's got to drain out of the alley and somewhere's got to be the high point and wherever that ends up. You know, uh that alley is pretty flat, so it probably has to be somewhere closer to the middle, so I I understand that as well, but um. Thank you guys uh for looking into that uh that more than answers my question, thanks. And that's it for me, thanks everybody for for all the participation tonight.
Thanks, member Diedrich, very good, um move on to member Whitney.
Yeah, thank you so much, um I just had a quick question or something to throw on the radar, uh where Winslow Crane uh was. And they're building a big apartment complex at that same, you know, in the last couple of years. Uh Ironworks Village got put up and the Foundry Apartment Complex also got put up, so we have a lot more traffic just going from Galapago. To Bates uh in that round, so I was, I'm not sure if with the apartment complex, uh they've talked about traffic flow, but I imagine it will increase. Uh out to Bates as well as down to Galapago and just kind of around there, uh so not something we need to worry about right now, but just keep on our radars. Uh less, and it's probably already on radars as well, so.
Yeah, we're we're also receiving concerns and complaints and Winslow isn't even, that site isn't even open yet. So this goes back to, we're working or planning and zoning or the planning department as part of community development is working on updating our codes. And so it a lot of it falls to the parking requirements for new developments and how many parking spots we require onsite versus on the street. And so um they are looking at that, right now our parking ratio is is uh maybe not in keeping with what people might expect. So that is going to be one point that they're looking at is, do we have enough or do we require enough off-street parking? And or are people just using the the street because it's convenient or are they using it because they simply have nowhere on site to park their vehicles?
Yeah.
Come come along, thank you.
Okay, yeah, my my comment actually wasn't on the parking, I'm I'm a little north, so I don't really deal with the parking there, so. Uh the question is actually dealt more with the speed, because there's no stop sign and that if people do park, I guess it kind of does. You have the BMW uh maintainer or maintenance shop there, and then you also have street parking there. So if people do park there, they basically have a straightaway until the stop sign, which is like five blocks down uh both ways. Uh so it ends up being a pretty fast strip for people to tear down.
Gotcha, okay, yeah, we can certainly take a look at the speeds out there and um. Uh one of the items that we're working on internally and one of the projects for the city is a neighborhood traffic calming program. So we're gonna start to develop that in the early part of. So we're going to start to develop that in the early part of 2022 and it would address things just like that. So instead of looking like maybe just at one intersection, but holistically, let's say along Bates in the segment you mentioned, is there something that we can do in those things that Chris Vogel saying pointed out, those little traffic circles or different things that we could do might be very applicable types of solutions to help slow some of that traffic down.
Wonderful, yeah, that sounds great, thank you. And the concern right now is just that, that is going to be a bigger apartment. So if we keep it open and, you know, then I think we'll get more complaints, as you said, the parking complaints are already coming through, so, thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Whitney, for your comment there. And thanks Director Andrea for responding to that, appreciate it. And, uh, let's move on to Member Can Addison.
Already the, um, only thing on my mind tonight, um, for tonight is just, I happened to notice at the, um, former Bullock mortuary site, uh, Lafayette and East Hampton Avenue that the stop sign got knocked over. Um, so didn't know if you were aware of that, um, but, and it seems like maybe it was, um, it's sort of, you know, interesting given our, our conversation about the traffic there, but, and, and the, uh, crashes at that area, uh, it seems like maybe, um, you know, it could just be like a, a tractor working on that project or some kind of a big truck hit into it, but it could also be a car going too fast on that, coming off of 285 that ran into it based upon the fact that it's leaning down to the west side. But, yeah, that's the only thing I have for tonight, thanks everybody.
Okay, well, thank you for that, that's obviously, uh, very important, make sure those stop signs are in place there, so. A good catch on that, Greg, so absolutely. And, uh, now it's brought to the seat's attention, we'll get that rectified hopefully here. Very good. Um, that's it for Chair, or I'm sorry, Committee Members' Choice, so move on to Council Members' Choice. And, uh, Councilman Sierra?
Thank you Chair Sarno, actually I have nothing for, uh, for the committee tonight.
Okay. Thank you for that, and you know, I want to just always extend out and Deputy Director Who's, if, you know, if you have any comments as well too? Anything else to add?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Okay, and then I don't know who else is on the line here, Chris, if you're still on the line, feel free to chime in as well.
I'm still here, but I'm good.
Okay, well, very good.
I just, I wanted to get the ins and outs of the E-TAC, you know, how you guys work, this is pretty interesting.
How the sausage gets made, right?
That's right.
That's it. Now, that's it, so, no, we appreciate it again, you know, your, your, um, your presentation and walking us through that. Um, very, uh, important and consequential to what we're trying to achieve here, partnering with us, we appreciate that, so.
Yeah, great, it's great to get to know everybody a little more and understand where you're all coming from, so I'm
Yeah.
looking forward to hearing from you a lot more, thanks.
Very good. All right, uh, I think that covers it, so at this time, thanks everyone for, for, for attending tonight, all of your input and we'll see you on the next one, so the meeting's officially adjourned, appreciate it, have a good night.
Have a good night all.
See you everyone.
Thanks.